Greetings to everyone. As I see the numbers climb, just trying to make sure that everybody has been able to get online with us. We're expecting what, oh, eight, nine months ago, we would have said was a large crowd, but relative to some recent meetings, it's relatively small at 80 or 90 folks, but we do welcome all of you. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Jim Nichol. I currently serve as the board president for the Seneca Valley School Board. Now, we've got all nine members of the board on, on the call this evening, along with some members of the administration. This is our work session for the month of September. It is September 14th, 2020. I will call this meeting to order and ask if you would all, as we typically do, wouldn't mind joining me for a brief moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. We are back in the school year, and with that brings an I-led the pledge. Ms. Andressi, would you make that introduction for us for our pledge tonight?
My pleasure. Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight's I-led the pledge is being said by three Seneca Valley Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps cadets, who are also seniors. When you watch the video tonight from left to right, you will see Zachary Tate, Marina Price, and Alexander Matusik. So if you could all please stand, if you are able, and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Ms. Palano, I didn't have really good audio there, but I appreciate you introducing and having our students from our JROTC program lead us in a pledge time. So thank you for that. With that, I will ask our board secretary Lisa Mizlin to please call the roll for the meeting.
Ms. Brittle, here. Mr. DiTullio, here. Ms. Harrison, here. Mr. Hester, here. Mr. Jacobs, here. Mr. Nichol, present. Mr. Peterson,
Good evening, here.
Ms. Whittle, here. And Mr. Whitterson.
Evening, here. My audio is terrible right now.
So Jeff, are you saying you really can't hear other members of the board or the administration?
I'm only getting about every third word of about what anybody's saying. It's very garbled even when I'm hearing that.
It's actually a little choppy with you coming this direction as well. I'm not sure if it might make sense for you to log out and perhaps log back in. Dr. Patel, is Mr. Vince Coy on the line by any chance this evening, or how might we be able to assist Mr. Whitterson?
He is not, but we can call his cellphone.
Okay, let's, let's see if we can get Jeff a little better situation. We can get started and then...
I would say if Mr. Whitterson logs out and logs back into Zoom, we could wait.
Wait for...
I'll try that now.
So Dr. Brian, you want to sort of pause the meeting for a few?
Yes, let's, let's pause the meeting for Mr. Whitterson to log out of Zoom and log back in.
Okay. So all of the attendees, again, apologies for a small technical glitch. We should be back in motion in just a few minutes.
Mr. Nichol, I would also recommend if Mr. Whitterson comes back in and still can't hear us well, he can mute his screen, and then that saves bandwidth at home. Can you hear us, Mr. Whitterson?
It's slightly better, but everything's not completely intelligible.
I would recommend, Mr. Whitterson, if you mute your video, that will give you more bandwidth at home. So we'll still be able to hear you. How is that, Mr. Whitterson?
That's now to the point that I can at least understand it. Rather than hoping to beat up, let's try and proceed.
Thank you, sir. Okay, folks, most of you may know this. In a work session, we typically work through and discuss a lot of topics and then take action on them in our second meeting of the month. We do have a handful of different action items tonight, but we will start off with, as we usually do, with some information reports. I'd ask Ms. Andressi to lead us through some portion of those.
Mr. President, before we jump into dates to remember, I just want to note that if you had any difficulty listening to the Pledge of Allegiance or watching that video, it is available via the SV2 link that is on the agenda, but we will also be posting it on our YouTube page tomorrow as well as the website. So feel free to check in, and you can see, they did a wonderful job, even took some drone footage of the American flag, if you were able to see that. So certainly check that on the website tomorrow. In the meantime, our dates to remember for this week specifically on Friday, Rosh Shana begins. Next week, next Monday, this time next Monday at 7:00 PM, we'll be back here for a school board regular meeting. It again will be a Zoom teleconference. On September 22nd, this is next week, autumn will begin, and then on the 26th, next weekend, we will be hosting SAT testing here at the senior high school. And we do have about 112 students signed up to take that, and social distancing will be practiced during that time. On September 27th, we wanted to note that Yom Kippur begins, and that is all I have for dates to remember. I think at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Annie Mersting, our Director of Development for the Seneca Valley Foundation. I believe she has a few updates.
I do. Thank you, Ms. Andressi. Good evening, Mr. President, and thank you to the entire board for allowing me to, again, share some great things happening through the Seneca Valley Foundation. I've mentioned in the past, and as you all know, the foundation is the nonprofit arm of the district that focuses on providing extras to our students and staff. Traditionally, these extras look like classroom enhancements, international education trips for our staff, equipment for the robotics and genetics labs, things that the district's budget just could not allow for, but that we feel set Seneca Valley apart. Now amidst the COVID-19 pandemic, the foundation has shifted priorities to assist the district with ensuring our students are taken care of and continuing to learn and thrive in this, forgive me for saying it, new normal. I just have two things to share with you. First, some information about childcare programs. In response to Dr. Vitale's plea to the community for help during these trying times, a few local organizations, namely the Cranberry Municipal Center, Stepping Stones, Dutil Church, and the Cranberry YMCA, quickly developed new school-aged childcare programs for our families to utilize, especially while the district is in this cohort model. In particular, Dutil Church and the YMCA are committed to keeping costs as low as possible for our families who are struggling, and we are working with them to achieve, to achieve that. If needed, more information about these programs and other childcare resources available to our entire community are on our website under the Community Support page. The second great thing that I wanted to share with you is some new outdoor learning spaces that have popped up on our campuses. Our Board of Trustees voted to fund large 20-by-40 outdoor tents for our schools to allow students to be protected from the elements while continuing to learn outdoors. Our administrators welcome this extra space and the opportunity, opportunity to get students outside because we know, and research has proven, that being outdoors is one of the best ways to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. These tents were provided at a discount from two local businesses, General Rental Center and Eventineers, both out of Cranberry, and were set up with the help of our Buildings and Grounds Department. I just want to take some time to thank everyone involved in these wonderful things and to all who have stepped up to assist the foundation and district with our efforts, whether through donations, discounts, or simply words of encouragement, it's all truly appreciated. And unless anyone has questions, that's all I have for you tonight, and I'll send it back to you, Mr. President. And as always, thank you to the entire board for all you're doing for the district.
My only question, Annie, is, Ms. Mersting is, I think you alluded to it, but if folks wanted to seek out an online way to donate to the foundation, is that off of the Seneca Valley School District website? Is there a link there?
Absolutely. On the district's page, there is a foundation tab, and there's a quick way to donate to our efforts. And if anyone would ever have any questions, feel free to contact me. You can find my contact info on that tab as well.
Wonderful. Anyone have any additional questions, Ms. Mersting, Mr. DiTullio?
Hey, Ms. Mersting, excellent work as always. I want to commend you for everything you've done. I really took the foundation and made it what it was supposed to be helping. You know, it started out to help in the classroom and make sure that, you know, the education was being improved within the walls of the school. You've taken it so much further, so much appreciative of all your efforts. And kudos to the community. When we asked for help with all this, you know, they stepped up like we knew that they would. But, you know, you organizing it and making sure it happened and everything, all those resources got to the kids that needed them, you know, kudos to you. Thank you very much for, for all that hard work.
Thank you, sir. It's my pleasure.
Anyone else? Thank you again. Appreciate you being with us. Ms. Andressi, we'll turn this back to you for student-staff recognition.
Mr. Nichol, and thank you, Ms. Mersting, for the information. Under our Student Staff Recognition section of the agenda, item C, Anne Newmire is a first grader from Haynes Elementary School, and she is feeling the love this week. The six-year-old recently had her artwork selected from almost 600 pieces of art to be named the Midwestern Intermediate Unit for Young Artist Purchase Prize Award winner for her paint simply called "Love." Ms. Newmire's artwork will be framed with a plaque and become a part of the permanent collection exhibited at the MIU four office in Grove City. In addition to the Young Artist Purchase Prize Award, Ms. Newmire's art was also chosen as the Juror's Choice Award winner and is the student representative of this year's exhibit. Her artwork will now appear on the T-shirt that is distributed to every student who participates in that exhibit. And if you have the opportunity to view the agenda, you can see the artwork that won her this prestigious award. So we congratulate Anne. We're so proud of her. On the same section, number two, we'd like to recognize tonight that officials of the National Merit Scholarship Corporation recently announced Seneca Valley seniors David Choi, Zachary Garcia, Simran Gyerman, Parker Logue, Anaya Rao, Avani Saluka, Anup Savio, and Dorabella White as semifinalists in the 66th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. As semifinalists, these eight seniors will now have the opportunity to continue in the competition for some 7,600 national merit scholarships worth more than $30 million, and those will be offered next spring. We congratulate them, and we wish them much luck in the next level of that competition. Our third item, Seneca Valley Senior, Senior Sarah Wheatenhoffer, appeared in the bright lights of Broadway this past weekend, specifically on Saturday, September 12th. The Cranberry Township team was excited to be a part of the National Down Syndrome Society's annual Times Square video presentation that featured photographs highlighting children, teens, and adults with Down syndrome, and reminds the world in a very big way about the contributions and milestones of people with Down syndrome. The photo of Sarah was selected as one of 500 photographs that appeared in the video, which streamed on the NDSS social media from the heart of Times Square. This event kicks off Down Syndrome Awareness Month, which will begin in October. So we congratulate Sarah on this honor and would encourage you to read more in your backup. And that is all I have at this time, Mr. President, unless, of course, you have questions.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Andressi? I would just say that assuming at some point we're back together in person again, I'd love to meet Anne Newmire, and maybe she would be kind enough to bring some of her artwork to a meeting so we can meet her and, and show her how proud we all are of her. So just a thought.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, we'll turn to agency reports. We'll start with VOTEC. Mr. Peterson, have you put a bullet point or two together for us?
Neither have I, Mr. President. We provided a pretty comprehensive report last month. Just a couple of things to add. There is a program administered by the Department of, Pennsylvania Department of Education entitled "The Continuity of Education for Career and Technical Centers." That program awarded the Butler County VOTEC a grant of $91,853, which Dr. Hyler announced with the concurrence of the JOC at their last meeting. She would like to hire an online learning coach to help the kids with distance learning, two, a health and student support employee to work with their campus nurse, and three, a COVID-19 custodian, someone to help existing custodial staff in keeping the place clean. So the JOC was in agreement with that, and I think we all felt that was a pretty good use of that money. Second thing I would share, just always parsing the numbers. This year, out of the total of 941 VOTEC students, 112 are from Seneca Valley. And in descending order, the most popular Seneca Valley programs are graphic design with 12 students, heavy equipment repair with 11 students, and a three-way tie with eight students each in welding, cosmetology, culinary arts, and health assistance. So Seneca Valley is really actively involved, I think, in the VOTEC, and it seems to be going well.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Does anyone have any questions? I also serve on the VOTEC joint effort, any committee with Mr. Peterson. I have nothing further to add, but any questions from members of the board? Okay, then. We'll turn to Mr. DiTullio to fill us in on what's going on at IU four.
Thank you very much. I agree with you, by the way, Mr. Nichol, on having Anne Newmire come in and present some of her art. One of the things that the MIU does is has the Very Special Art Program every spring. Unfortunately, COVID had that canceled this year, and then what we would do is bring in, you know, someone like Anne who, who won this year. She would come in and present, you know, her artwork to the MIU board. It's a great evening. You get to meet these kids. You know, they, they make it so much fun to be involved. As we know, the kids are what we're here for. So when you get to, to work with these, these kiddos, when they come in, winning this award and how proud they are of that, I mean, that, that's big for them. So hopefully, we can get past this, and this won't be the new norm, and we can actually meet in person again and meet, you know, these people that, that, you know, win these awards all the time. So looking forward to seeing that happen here soon in the future. Basically, just a few follow-ups. We do have our, our meeting for this month. It's next Wednesday. So just a little bit of what has happened between last month and this month that I can fill you in on. The IU has become a central point for the Rapid Response Center that's been developed by the Department of Education and Department of Health as far as dealing with the schools and getting them information on COVID. The IUs have been used because instead of having 500 schools trying to call the Rapid Response Center, they're going to filter first through the IUs. If the IU is able to answer the question, provide that information they need, they're doing it. If not, they have a, we'll call it the hotline into the Rapid Response Center that will get them an answer, the school districts a little more quickly. So if you remember, the IU serves, you know, three counties and some of the very remote school districts in our area of Butler, Lawrence, and Mercer County. So it's a, you know, someone like us, we have, you know, staffs that can handle a lot of that. A lot of these other schools are, you know, it's basically a superintendent. There, there's no, there's not a much support there. So the IU's been, been serving that function very well for those school districts. So very proud of what they've been able to accomplish. There's a lot of calls going in. You know, a lot of it in the beginning was called panics, but, you know, they have, as schools gotten back and, and folks have learned, you know, there's ways to deal with things now, the quote-unquote "new normal" coming into play. It's become less and less frustrating for everyone. So the Rapid Response Center in the IU has done a very good job of that. So we'll get more updates at the end of next week, and in our meeting next month, I'll build up, they've even furthered.
Thank you, Mr. DiTullio. Anyone have any questions for Mr. DiTullio at IU four? Okay, see none. We'll turn it back to Mr. Peterson. You know, Mr. Peterson, for those of you who might be joining us for the first time or the second or third time, he provides us a legislative update. No busier time than right now, and as long as I can remember, legislatively in both our federal sector and the state and even local. So, Mr. Peterson, if you would, please take us through.
Thank you, Mr. Nichol. And in that vein, just an introductory comment. Up until now, I've tried my best to pinpoint or pin drop every piece of legislation at the House and Senate side and the federal and, and state level. And I'm going to back away from doing that unless people object. It's just too much detail. And often by the time I get it to you, it's changed, or in the next day, it changes. So I'm going to take a little higher level view of legislative issues from now on. And certainly, if anyone in the intervening month has a question about a bill or an activity, if they'll reach out to me, I'll do my best to research and answer for them. That said, I can report that the Federal House and Senate are back in session after the August recess. They will recess again from October 12th to November 6th, a period coinciding with the election. This year, 435 out of 435 House members are up for reelection, and 35 out of 100 senators will be on the ballots this year. In Pennsylvania, Senator Toomey will not have to run again until 2023, and Senator Casey is good to go until 2025. So we certainly have state, our House representatives running for election this year. Both of our senators are, are not in the hunt. Also, at the federal level, Secretary DeVos was in an attempt to divert millions of CV COVID dollars to private and charter schools. That attempt was frustrated by a decision by a federal judge who ruled that such an action was an overstep of her authority. So those dollars will remain in the pool for all public schools. And moving on to the state. A lot of legislation, of course, is focused on the COVID activities, including today's actions around school sports, which I believe we'll cover later. There's also a lot of focus on getting web access and enhancing broadband to rural areas to support distance learning. In addition to that, getting the hardware that's necessary for some kids that can, perhaps can't afford, and school districts cannot access some of that hardware due to limitations in the supply chain. Senate bill, there is one Senate bill I'd like to point out. Senate Bill 539 has a good deal of support to remove any student convicted of sexual assault against another student from the school that the victim attends, so that a convicted felon, assaulter, would be removed from the school where they might run into the victim of their assault in the hallway and the classrooms and whatnot. And that, it's a Senate bill that has a great deal of support. And indeed, a little bit later in our agenda, we're going to talk about one of our policies that addresses that as well. So unless anyone has any questions, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Does anyone have any questions? Is there any discussion on this topic at this time? Okay, thank you again, Mr. Peterson. We have two other information items. The first of the last two are our financial reports. They were detailed in your backup. They're for operations, senior high activities, intermediate high activities, middle school activities, athletics, food services, tax collection reports, and capital project funds. To the extent you have any questions on those items, as always, please feel free to reach out to Ms. Burtner. And then finally, included in your backup is the real estate transactions for July of 2020 from Butler County Matters. I don't know if there was any commentary that anybody in the administration wanted to make on those. I, I note that, as is usually the case, the volume of transactions in Cranberry Township is significant, but we also highlight Evan City Harmony Jackson Township and Lancaster Township and the volume there as well. So thank you for including that in our backup. Does anybody have any questions about either the financial reports or this real estate transactions data? Is there any discussion? Mr. Peterson?
Mr. Nichol, I might just take a moment to point out, if people haven't heard, Jerry Andre, who's, of course, been the spark plug to Cranberry Township, has announced his retirement to become effective right after the first of the year, early in January. And I'm sure they hired a new assistant manager. Not sure who's going to be the, the replacement for Jerry, but certainly, I'm sure the discussion will ramp up as we get closer to the holidays, acknowledging the contributions that he's made. And I'm also equally sure we'll probably find a little different tone in that office next year when he moves on.
Quite possible. He's been, he's been around for 30-plus years. Thank you for pointing it out, Mr. Peterson. Okay, we'll turn to our action agenda. We have, as I said, a handful of items, maybe a few more than we typically do on the first meeting of the month. Before we start into those, though, we always offer members of the community, our constituents, to make public comments. Whether we're doing it here virtually or in person, it's still the case. I'm under the understanding from Ms. Palano that we have just one request this evening. So with that, Ms. Palano, if you would, please introduce our first and only speaker at the next meeting.
Sure thing. Mr. Rich Cashdollar has requested to address the board this evening. Mr. Cashdollar, I will now give you the opportunity to speak to the board.
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you just fine. Welcome. Thank you for taking a few minutes to, to speak to us. We typically try and limit commentary to around four minutes. Since you're the only speaker this evening, we'll certainly give you some flexibility there. But you're on with the members of the Seneca Valley School Board and our administration.
Thank you, President Nichol, as well as the board, for letting me, giving me the opportunity to talk a little bit. I currently have two students in the Seneca Valley District, and myself, my wife, and some others I've talked to have some concerns related to the current delivery approach of, of education under the cohort model that's been rolled out during the initial part of the year. Myself and others, I believe, thought that the cohort model would be a combination of in-school learning and then the days that the students are joining remotely, that they would be doing that through some sort of live streaming in the, in the classroom, just like they were attending in, in person. We were under the impression that the delay in this, in the start of the school year gave the, the staff adequate time to do the necessary training and have the necessary setup of that so that that could be administered in the, in the, in the classroom. I spoke earlier today with Mr. McKinley, and he mentioned to me, brought me up to speed with the fact that although the, the teachers have the ability to do that, it's kind of at their discretion whether they want to use that model or, or do something different as far as the, the days that the students are, are remote. I, I, you know, been checking in with my boys, and, and in general, I don't believe that any of them had had any live-streamed classes at this point in time. It appears that the curriculum is just being repeated to the students that are in school that, that particular day. You know, I'm concerned that after we missed, missed basically nine weeks of school in, in, at the end of last year, that we're, we're basically only getting two fifths of an education as we're in, in the current status. You know, as far as the remote learning, I think it should be something that should be a requirement versus an option. You know, ideally, our children need structure and, and, and that on-hand learning. And, you know, if, if we can do it in a fashion that they start at eight and end at three... they start at eight and end at three, you know, four or five days a work week, that will be ideal to 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 their learning. You know, I don't think this is unique from the perspective of I know a lot of industry is is using this technology as well as some of the other districts that maybe are smaller in nature and even have less less resources to to be able to administer these programs and their their live streaming class every day, five days a week for those that don't have any in-house educational process right now. I just, you know, as as our our kids move along through the system, I would like it to be considered, you know, what what is being done in that space to try to, if we aren't able to return to school full time, what what is being done to to basically enhance that process so that they can truly stay equal to to the peers and other and other districts. So I know I said a lot there. I'll pause and see if anyone has any any comments at this point in time.
Mr. Cash Dollar, I I thank you for joining us. As I said, at the outset of your remarks, we when we have folks come speak to us, it's not typical that we get into a dialogue or a Q and A. This is an opportunity for you to to share your voice with every member of the board as well as administration. What I can tell you, and I knew that Dr. McKinley had had an extended conversation with you early earlier today, is that we certainly there was a broad group of people that spent a lot of time through the summer months to come up with our plan. And we've spent a lot of time deliberating where we're at with that plan in the last month and a half to two months. We never rest on our laurels. And when I say that, I mean that we continue to learn each and every day where we're having some success and where we're having not so much success. And I know that Dr. McKinley, Dr. McCarty, you know, Dr. Patel, and really everybody on this on this screen is constantly looking for ways to make the process as robust and as rewarding and as effective as possible. I know that Dr. Patel later in in this evening's meeting is just going to talk a little bit about how the the year began and has begun. There might be a few comments in there about some aspects that that are tied into your commentary. But again, I thank you for being here. Your words do not fall on deaf ears. We'll probably have some follow up conversation with Dr. McKinley to get a little I will, I might say that, to get a little bit more detail on your conversation. So thank you for being here.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Yeah, take care. We'll and and please come back anytime. We're we're I'm always interested and eager to have folks from the community come and speak to us when that's something on the mind.
And Mr. Nickel, if I may.
Please.
If Mr. Cash Dollar can stick around towards the end of the meeting, I will be speaking more directly to live streaming as well.
Thank you, Dr. Patel. With that, we'll move on to the action items. The first is for some personnel action. And as I look at my agenda, I don't have anybody assigned to take this. I'll I'll just I'll start it off. I know we had, we did see some resignations, some appointments, contracted services, leaves and retirements. The motion, which I will make, is to approve all of those that were detailed for us in our backup and discuss in executive session. Can I have a second for that motion, please? Mr. DiTullio, thank you. Given we've had our deliberation on that topic, Lisa, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DiTullio?
Yes.
Miss Miss Harrison?
Yes.
Miss Bradel?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Miss Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Widowson?
Yes.
And Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Okay, Lisa. Our next item is with regards to our competition phase spectator protocols. I would look for a motion on this item, and then we'll have some discussion. The motion would be to approve the competition phase spectator protocols addendum to the revised health and safety plan for return to sport and activity that is included in our backup. May I have a motion in that regard, please? Ms. Harrison, may I have a second? Ms. Bradel, thank you. So we've got a motion and a second. I believe Ms. Lewis, you're going to start off and give us some highlights of some of the modifications.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Nickel. The protocols put before you tonight are in regard to House Bill 2787 that currently sits on the governor's desk, anticipating that that will come into law in the next 10 to two week, 10 days to two weeks. And the protocols establish a way for us to responsibly admit spectators to events, but still allow us to practice appropriate social distancing, follow the facial covering recommendation to really do our part in in helping prevent any more spread of of COVID-19. The protocols are established by venue and by sport. And we try and meet spectator limitations that will allow for that social distancing. And these will be different depending on the venue. So for example, a cross country race course will be different than a volleyball gymnasium. And so we will set the spectator capacity based on the venue and the sport and the squad sizes that are in participation for that particular venue. We do plan to charge for the events that we normally have charged for varsity football, varsity soccers, varsity volleyball. And this will allow the opportunity for our parents to get into the stands and watch their children compete.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. I'll turn it over to the board to see who might have questions, what discussion we may want to have, any deliberation on these modifications. Mr. DiTullio?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad that we were taking a proactive response, you know, hoping that we're going to be able to allow more folks to know our stands, you know, parents to see their kids. That's the big thing. The the one thing that's in there that I think, you know, is a lot different is, you know, we're going to be charging more money, but we've got a lot to do to make sure that we can keep things clean. So I think that our our parents are going to understand that. At least I hope they will. But it's part of, you know, trying to make sure that we can do this safely and make sure that we are taking a responsible approach to it as well. We all know what's what's in the news and everything that's going on right now. You know, things change daily, hourly as we know. So this is a a a plan that's being put in place to make sure that we can do this responsibly. Now, we don't want to see, you know, you hear horror stories all the time of, you know, people not acting. Well, it's, you know, the parents acting not as responsible as the kids, right? And we're trying to avoid that. Ms. Lewis's plan is is put together to make sure that we can do this in in a way that parents get to see their kids play. It's done responsibly. It's done safely. And it's done in a way that we can continue to massage this plan. We've always said that we're going to come back and we're going to keep looking at things. And as things change, we're going to react. You know, hopefully, this is going to be in a positive way. We can continue to do it. But if our parents are are not going to be cooperative, this is going to be a learning curve. You know, we're looking for understanding. We're not trying to prevent anyone from seeing their kids play. But there's going to be growing pains of doing this different than was done in the past. I'm I'm hopeful that, you know, our parents are going to understand these limitations are going to work with us as a district, work with Ms. Lewis and and her staff, you know, also with Mr. Miller and his staff that's going to be out there. You know, no one's trying to turn anyone away. No one's trying to do anything different. But we're going to be looking for cooperation from people and understanding that sometimes it's not going to be what people think it is. And they have to listen to those folks that are going to be on this campus that are telling you, this is the way that we're doing things right now at Seneca Valley. You bring your comments, you know, send them to us. You can come and speak at board meetings. But when you come on to campus, please listen to those folks that are in charge. And they're going to get you to where you need to be. It's going to take a little bit longer. It's going to be different outlook, but we're looking for cooperation. So thank you very much for all the work, Ms. Lewis. Keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiTullio. Nothing more to add from my standpoint. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Whittle, please.
It's probably going to be exactly what Mr. DiTullio said, but just to reiterate the first thing, in all of our decisions that we've been making since March, has been first and foremost, the safety of our students and our athletes in this in this situation. The second for the sports is to allow our children to participate and to compete. That brings normalcy to them. The third, we're going to do our best to first get family, parents and family members in those stands safely with all the protocols, wearing masks, social distancing, and will be monitored by our staff, insecure insecurity. And just like everything else that we've been asking our community, it's going to be a buy in. We're not going to be able to do this unless we all cooperate. So again, comes back to the safety and to the children. And again, Mr. DiTullio said it, we're going to have to pack our patience with all this said. So I appreciate all the efforts. You know, Ms. Lewis, you and your staff, it's this has been a marathon. It's been a long grind and it might it's we don't see the end. That end tape is nowhere in sight. So please know you have our support. We support the safety of our children and the participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Will. Well said. Well, unless there's any other discussion, any other questions, I would ask Lisa, if you would please call the roll on this item.
Sure. Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. DiTullio?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Widowson?
Yes.
And Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you, Lisa. So the next item on our agenda, and I apologize, I didn't get a chance to discuss this with Dr. Patel before now. This is a bit of a sort of live update. We we have a slate of candidates for the Pennsylvania School Board Association for the 2020 election of officers. I see them detailed in our backup. It looks to me that for almost every position, we really just have either one candidate or in some situations where we're allowed to vote for up to two, two candidates, except for the the position of vice president. I'm not sure who maybe can guide me the littlest bit to see if I'm reading that correctly. Note takers. Okay. Well, you know, the the motion that we're looking to make is to is to elect the PSBA officers as detail in our backup. And again, I think we've got the slate of candidates other other than for vice president. Mr. DiTullio, you're a we've been to a few of the PSBA meetings. Maybe I'll put you on the spot. I think we need to make a decision between one of those two candidates for the PSBA vice president?
That that is my understanding as well. And I guess I will say, in the in the past, when it's come up, you know, we really haven't gotten into a lot of deciding these because we didn't know who these folks were. Usually, we would say, you know, if there's a default, stick to someone closer. But, you know, we have two candidates for vice president that are the only open one. One's from Vanango County, one's from Allegheny County. They're kind of both from our our side of the state, which is unusual. We really are seeing differences there. But as far as both of these, these folks, I don't know either of them well enough to say one way or another, you know, which way I would throw my support.
Well, the good news is I know Dan O'Keefe. Dan is with Northgate School District. I spent a year with him and something called Leadership Pittsburgh. He's a good man. The superintendent in his district, Caroline Johns, attended Leadership Pittsburgh with him as well. She speaks very highly of Dan. So perhaps I'll make the motion. And unless anyone has any issue with or disagreement with, we can take it from there. And I'm altering this just a bit. So Lisa, have your have your pencil ready. So my motion would be to elect the slate of candidates as for the Pennsylvania School Board Association officers as detailed in our backup with the stipulation that for vice president, my motion would be to elect Dan O'Keefe into that position. So that's my motion. Mr. Hoffman, did I do that reasonably well enough?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you, sir. May I have a second for that motion? Mr. DiTullio? I know we've already had a little discussion. Is there any other discussion? Does anybody have any questions with regards to this slate of candidates? Okay, we'll take it from there. We've got a motion in a second. Lisa, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Widowson?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DiTullio?
Yes.
Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
And Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you. Next week, we'll be looking to approve the minutes, which were detailed in your backup. They are for the three sessions we had in August. Work session on August 3, regular meeting on August 10, and the special meeting on August 31. The treasurers the treasurer's report also provided in your backup. The general fund bills detailed in your backup in the grand total of $3,630,639.72. And the construction fund bills also detailed in your backup. They are in a grand total of $2,520,683.67. As it relates to some of the financial items, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to Ms. Bertner. To the extent you have any questions on the minutes, please, by all means, we can discuss that offline as well. With that, I'll turn to administration actions and ask Mr. DiTullio to walk us through some board policies we're going on tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll start out by I'll make the motion that we approve the following board policies, and these are all found in our backup. Number 103, non-discrimination in school and classroom practices revised second and final reading. Number 104, non-discrimination in employment contract practices revised second and final reading. Number 138, language instruction education program revised second and final reading. And number 309.1, telework revised first and final reading.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. DiTullio. May I have a second, please? Mr. Hester, thank you, sir. Does anyone have any questions on these policies? Mr. Peterson, please.
Thank you again, Mr. Nickel. I realize that we're looking at board policy number 103 for a second and final reading. Nonetheless, I'd like to make a suggestion for a slight modification that I quite frankly feel very strongly about. There is a paragraph that's headed emergency removal. And it reads in part, sexual harassment affecting an immediate threat to the physical health or safety of an individual, and then goes on to authorize the school to remove that actor from the school premises. I'd like to strongly suggest a slight modification so that it reads sexual harassment affecting an immediate threat to the physical, mental, or emotional health or safety of an individual. I think by limiting causate of the cause for removal to simply physical threats really doesn't fulfill the the intent of this part of the policy. So with full recognition that this is supposed to be a final reading, I would ask that we modify the motion slightly and include mental or emotional health along with threat to mental and emotional health as well as physical health.
So, Mr. Peterson, I mean, I'm looking at the document, and I see it's page number 150 of our packet. But at the bottom of the page is where it starts emergency removal. And then it it has one first sentence, and then it looks to move on to another sentence on the next page. Is that the paragraph you're alluding to?
I believe it's headed sexual harassment affecting students. And then emergency removal is the paragraph.
Yes, Mr. Peterson is talking about policy number 103, is discrimination, Title IX, sexual harassment affecting students. He is at the bottom of the second page of that policy, where it begins with emergency removal.
Right.
And what he's asking is you move through that paragraph onto the next page, it says threat to the physical health or safety of an individual. He would like to amend that to add, Mr. Peterson, mental and emotional?
That's correct, Dr. Patel. Thank you for that summary.
So then it would be a threat to the physical, mental, or emotional health or safety of an individual. So then it would be a threat to the physical, mental or emotional health or safety of an individual.
That's correct, Mr. Nichols.
So I'll turn to, I think it's going to be to you, Mr. Hoffman, for a second. A- a- as we craft this language. And for folks online, we typically get a suggestion sort of a template from the Pennsylvania School Board Association. I'm assuming this is no different here. Did we consider this kind of a modification or, Mr. Hoffman, do you have any color commentary around the modifications in this policy?
You're correct, Mr. Nichols, that the draft that was presented at the board for the initial reading. Was based upon the PSBA recommended template. I don't have any concern or objection to what Mr. Peterson is suggesting to be added. He indicated, I think, that additional, you know, the additional statements, particularly so emotional well-being. Is consistent with the spirit of the emergency removal.
And, Mr. Peterson, you're just, you're just suggesting this for policy number 103?
That is correct.
Right, this for our students as opposed to. Okay. Does anyone have any thoughts or comments or questions around this possible modification? Mr. DiTullio?
I, I would accept it as a friendly amendment if, if we can do that, Mr. Hoffman?
Yeah, the, the reason why we have multiple readings is to allow the board to make adjustments.
Right.
And for a final reading, again, you can make adjustments and I would suggest that the. The modification that Mr. Peterson is suggesting is not so dramatic as to require yet another reading. So certainly the board could accept that recommendation and with that change, adopt that policy as a final reading this evening.
So then, Mr. Hoffman, we wouldn't need to make any modification to the motion and the second for these policies?
Well, given Mr. Peterson's comment, yes, we either, you'll need the consent of those moving it or we'll need a formal motion to amend.
Okay. Remind me, I should know, but the motion was from Mr. DiTullio.
Correct.
Do you consent to this modification, sir?
I do.
And our second, I think, was Mr. Hester? Lisa, could you tell?
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Hester, do you have any objection to this modification? Nope, he's shaking his head no, okay.
I'm sorry, nope.
That's right, that's fine. I, usually what I, I forget to hit the off mute button at least three times in a meeting, okay? Okay, so we'll, we'll refer to that as sort of a friendly amendment. Again, I'll, I'll just read the paragraph, or at least the first section of it. It's titled emergency removal, when an emergency removal of a student, and, and folks, this is all within the context of reports of Title IX sexual harassment and other discrimination or retaliation. When an emergency removal, removal of a student as described in attachment three is warranted to address an immediate threat. To the physical, mental or emotional health or safety of an individual. And it is not feasible to continue educational services remotely. I don't know that I need to read the entire paragraph, but that's it in the context of that specific paragraph so that everyone is on board. Okay, I think we have, everybody's on the same page. Thank you. Please, Mr.
If I remember correctly in reading this, in the procedures, then we would have to adjust the procedures which are attachments to this policy.
Right.
I know at least in attachment three, the wording would have to be changed there when it comes to emergency removal. So as long as you make the motion that anywhere else that this same language is repeated, that we could. Adjust and edit those procedures to reflect the policy.
I'm hoping that it would be okay to simply reflect that intent in our minutes. Mr. Hoffman's nodding a bit to that. Is that an acceptable way to address this?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, so Lisa, if you could please address that in the minutes, that anywhere else in this document. Which needs to be modified within the context of the spirit of the amendment that we just made, let it please be done so. Thank you, Dr. Patel. Okay, so unless there's any other discussion, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had our discussion. Lisa, would you please call the roll on these board policies?
Yes, Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. DiTullio?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Widowson?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you. Mr. DiTullio, I'll let you continue on with a few other administration action items we'll take care of next week.
Thank you very much. Next week, we'll look to approve the, these following items. Care Unlimited Incorporated doing business as Avina Healthcare Provider Agreement to approve the Care Unlimited Inc. Doing Business as Avina. Healthcare Provider Agreement to provide healthcare services to students through June 30th, 2021 as provided our backup. And Epic Health Services Incorporated Doing Business as Avina Healthcare Provider Agreement to approve the Epic Health Services Incorporated. Doing Business as Avina Healthcare Provider Agreement to provide healthcare services to students through June 30th, 2021 as provided our backup. And school bus drivers to approve the list of new school bus drivers for ABC Transit and Valley Lines as provided in our backup.
Thank you, Mr. DiTullio. Does anybody have any questions on these three items? I have one. Forgive me, I should know this because I've been on the board for a while, but what jurisdiction, I mean, is it the approval of bus drivers? Is that as simple as if these are people that are driving our children, you know, we reserve the right to approve them? Is it built into the nature of the contract with, with ABC and Valley Lines or is there something else?
There's a regulation that provides that the board is to be approving bus drivers.
Okay, so it's.
On the agenda.
Okay, regulatory, gotcha. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Unless there's any other discussion on those points, I'll turn to a couple of brief or one brief instruction action item. Ms. Harrison, please.
Yes, next week, we're going to approve the following instruction action item. It's MHY Family Services Agreement. Approve the agreement with MHY Family Services for services during the 2020-21 school year as provided to the backup.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Does anyone have any questions on this specific item? Okay. We'll turn to what's also a brief business and finance action item agenda. Mr. Jacobs, if you would, please.
Thank you. Next week, we will look for the approval of one business finance action, AMCOM formerly ComDoc. Approve a document printer slash copier lease renewal, renewal with AMCOM formerly ComDoc for a 60-month term in the amount of $14,570 per month. The details of which are in the backup.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Does anyone have any questions or is there any discussion on this business and finance action item? Okay, and lastly, I'll just take this one next week as we do each week when we get together. What else? Personnel action items. Those will be detailed for us in some backup prior next week's meeting and discussed in executive session. Lastly, not quite lastly, we are in receipt of, excuse me. Looks like there's about 15, 16 pieces of communication. As I've said in weeks past. We, every member of the board sees emails that are sent into the board mailbox. They're forwarded on to us. This, this month is no exception, just so that everyone knows, we do get the opportunity to see them and, and read each and every word of each and every one of them, so. Please, thank you, and, and we appreciate the correspondence. Before we adjourn. I know I've asked Dr. Patel to speak for a few minutes about the start of the school year. Is there any other new business? Any member of the board would like to bring up? Okay, Dr. Patel, if you could just take a few minutes. I know it's only been a few days, but would love to hear a little bit about how things have begun at Seneca Valley.
Thank you so much. So from the very top seat, I can tell you that I'm very pleased. That a lot of planning and preparation through the summer months really did pay off. Certainly, it's not perfect. We would love to have our children here five days a week as all of us want. And all of us want what we had in February before the March pandemic. But the reality is that we have started slow, we have taken our time, and we have reaped benefits and so have our children. I have visited every building in the district. I know Dr. McKinley did, Dr. McCarty, many of the administrators on this call, Dr. Roberts, Dr. Polano, Ms. Bobak. And we are very pleased with what we're seeing in the buildings. We did ask the teachers in their first week, those first, first four physical days last week. To be focusing on physically meeting the students in front of them, building relationships. Student mental health, we didn't know what to expect, you know, how were things explained in the home about the pandemic? What did children know about the pandemic? Believe it or not, when I was in one of our elementary schools on day two. A youngster, probably about fifth grade, was walking with a fourth grader who was crying and I said, how can I help you? What's wrong? And the older child, the fifth or sixth grader said, she doesn't know what grade she's in. Okay, so, and I said, okay, let's talk through this, let's find a counselor, let's find a principal. So when youngsters show up on our front door and they're not sure what grade they're in. As well as they're afraid because now they're seeing all of these adults in masks. And they're wearing masks, that takes some getting used to. So again, I'm going to ask our community and our parents for their flexibility and their patience. We did not mandate that teachers would be doing live streaming last week. Some of them did do it. They know how to work the technology. They've all been trained, but we did ask them to pay attention to the youngsters that were getting off the bus. That it was important, you know, the size of Seneca Valley, just look at our campus, we have over 100 buses. All coming to the campus at the same time. And we have students who are getting on and off different bus stops than last year. So just working through those logistics. With masks, with Plexiglas barriers in our cafeteria, Plexiglas in classroom, there was a lot to get used to. So I will tell you that I'm very pleased with what I saw last week. Was it perfect? No. Is any opening perfect? No, but I'm very proud of our teachers. I'm very proud of our principals, our professional staff and our support staff because what I did see in every building. Is teachers and principals and support staff greeting students as they got off their bus. I saw them walk students to classrooms. I saw them in classrooms talking with children, trying to read their nonverbals with a mask on. So the, these are challenging times and I'm, and I'm asking for patience from our parents as well. I know parents, our parents and every parent in every district is quick to make comparisons to other districts. Parents, when you call me or email me, you're not telling me anything I don't know. I speak to every superintendent in this county every week. So when you say, well, look what they're doing in this neighboring district, I know, I've spoken to that superintendent. And I think one of the things that I'd like all of our parents to know and think about is that every district is different and they have a different context. Seneca Valley has a lot of resources and I'm proud of that. But we made the decision not to mandate live streaming on day one. Because we ask our teachers to pay attention to the children in front of them, the children getting off the buses. We have asked our teachers to begin live streaming more, so you will be seeing more and more of this as we go through the cohort model. We've asked our teachers that whatever they've decided to do, whether that's today, I'm repeating the lesson from yesterday or I'm moving on. That they would post that in our portal. Seneca Valley is the only district I know that has our own homegrown portal. That's been developed by our technology department. This is not a product we buy. This is a product that we have personalized. And we have done that with our technology department. So we have asked our parents to look at and our students to look at class announcements. In the portion of the portal and that's where parents will know, am I live streaming tomorrow or am I not? There may be other teachers and, and we know because they've given us great feedback. That are starting with just the voice portion. And some people say, well, why can't you do what this district has done? I would ask you to watch the news. There are districts that are back five days a week and there are districts that are not back at all. There are districts that have been hacked, their technology systems have been hacked. That's why we have decided to take this slow, make sure our systems are secure, make sure our students understand how to use the system, make sure our parents understand. Again, I know we will not meet everyone's expectation 100% of the time. But I am thankful and I am grateful that we have our students back in the cohort model. We have every reason to believe that we will then go to five days a week on October 5th. But again, I would caution the comparisons because I've been in education a long time and just because you're in a seat physically. Or listening at home does not mean you're learning. Okay, so we talk a lot as educators about teaching versus learning. I can teach a lesson to 30 kids in my class today or 20 kids. That doesn't mean they will learn it, even if they're in the seat looking at me. Okay, and now we have masks. And just because a school is going to school in person five days a week does not mean their children are learning any more than our children. At Seneca Valley, we talk about authentic learning. We talk about authentic assessment. And we've talked about that pre-COVID in the traditional environment. Because how do you explain when kids move on to the next grade and they may not get a concept that another child got and the teacher says, but I taught it? There's a difference between teaching and learning. We are focused on authentic learning. And so we would appreciate not being compared to other districts. Seneca Valley, we take our time, we do things right. And we make sure that when we are going into this method, we can do what we say we're going to do. Other districts have had significant issues. I've talked to these superintendents with the amount of kids that are stacked up outside of their doors. They've had significant traffic issues. Those are real challenges. And so I'm grateful that we're in the cohort model, that we can work through all of these bugs. That we can work through the fact that when we got our misters, three and four of them were breaking and dumping expensive chemical on the floor. So we had time to go in and fix those and reroute those and I'm thankful for our Buildings and Grounds Committee. Other school districts didn't even buy misters. So I, I just don't know, you know, I, I just don't like to compare public schools. Everybody is doing the very best that they can. And again, I'm asking for your patience. As parents, you will see more live streaming. Every day you will see more and more, and if you don't, you can give us a call. But keep in mind, we want you to take a, a special look at that class announcements. Because for instance, I might be a middle school teacher that has decided to block two days. So I might teach one day and then I'm expecting some independent learning to go on that next day. I was a high school English teacher. I did not use direct instruction every day. The best learning is not the teacher standing in front of kids lecturing every day. That's even in the traditional environment. So I'd really like to get our head around authentic learning. And just because you're in a seat five days a week does not mean you're learning more than a child that's in a seat two days a week or three days a week. So I want us to focus on what are our children learning at Seneca Valley? If you're not pleased with what you're seeing, reach out to the teachers first. I spoke to a mom this week, she was great, she was wonderful. And I said, have you shared with your child's teachers? How you feel about this? And she said, no. And I said, what about your child's principal? No. I am glad, I will talk to anyone the school board knows, my staff, we will talk to any parent every day, all day long. That's what we signed up to do. We want people to feel comfortable. We want people to trust what we're doing. But if you don't start with the teacher, then, you know, when I called over to that building. They're already going to be on the defensive because you called me first. So I would highly encourage us to start with our teachers. They may not know that you're frustrated. They may not know that something's not working right. I also want to mention that every district I speak to has had significant, significant technical difficulties. I have not met a district superintendent who has said their live streaming is working perfectly. I, I haven't seen that. So please know that as we wade into this territory, it still won't be smooth and perfect. As evidenced tonight on our Zoom meeting, there will always be glitches. And so we're doing the very best that we can, but I would encourage parents to start by asking their teacher, do you have time with a, for a phone call? Because that, you know, we're missing, I, I really think one thing I've noticed in communications with COVID is we're very disjointed. And even the companies that are using the technologies to conduct meetings, I've spoken to many people in the business field who have said. We just had our regional sales meeting and boy, was it disjointed. It was on Zoom, we were all there, but it was very disjointed. It's difficult to communicate in this new environment. And it's difficult in schools when we all have masks on to read the nonverbals. So it is not going to be perfect and I would contend that back in February, it wasn't perfect either. That just because kids are physically in a seat does not mean they're learning any faster. That just because kids are physically in a seat does not mean they're learning any faster than kids who aren't. So I, again, I would just ask for your patience and your flexibility. Our goal is to go to five days a week. And we would do that by October fifth per the board. I will update the board again at their next meeting. I will tell you, my office is watching the Butler County cases quite closely. We've been following the fourteen day ruling average. As of today, we're at ten point nine, the day prior, ten point eight, keep going back, ten point six, eleven, ten point six. When we started talking about cohort, we were under nine. We are slowly creeping up in the county, not by much, but we're paying attention. The doctors on my two o'clock call today said we have not yet seen the Labor Day effect. They think those numbers will go up slightly, we shall see. I'm also following not just by county but by zip code. So we took every zip code in the Seneca Valley School District, and you don't get a daily count on that, you get a total since the pandemic. But then we use a spreadsheet to um, bear out how many new cases just in our zip codes. And the latest data on that is today, we are three new cases in our zip codes in our school district. Versus two days ago on nine twelve, it was six new cases. And then on nine ten, we were down one case. So we keep following that, and that goes back since the start of school. We have no known COVID cases with our teachers or with any students currently in the district. We did have eight students in the summer as a result of hotspots, sleepovers, or parties. And uh, some family transmission as well. But none from uh, that we're aware of through contact tracing through the, the Department of Health when it comes to sports. We have none so far in the district, but I would caution us, that's four days. And, and it's, it's early, you know, it's too soon to tell. What us coming back to school will do to the county or our school district zip code numbers, but I am hopeful. And I am confident that we are doing everything we can to mitigate the spread at school. I'm very proud of our students. Not one student showed up without a mask unless they had a serious medical condition. Little ones, kindergarten, first grade, keeping them on all day, even though we're giving them breaks. Ninth and tenth graders telling me, I'm good, I don't need a break. The kids are being wonderful. And we were just delighted to welcome them back. I could not be happier considering the circumstances. How well we've done, especially when it comes to transportation and the amount of parents now driving their children. Our brand new security team, they've done a wonderful job. Our principals are out and about, there's a lot of visibility. Uh, like I said, when I go to every building, I see principals walking to cars to get students out of those cars. I mean, that kind of customer service is just, um, I'm very proud of that, I really am. So I don't know if Dr. McCarty or Dr. McKinley has anything to add from the curriculum and instructional piece or not.
I'm not seeing, okay.
Just to reiterate, uh, a couple of things, as Dr. Vitale mentioned. I'll be honest with you, I think having the kids and teachers in the buildings is truly what we needed for people's outlook on where we are in the society right now. I can tell you the optimism that is coming from the teachers and the kids is contagious. So to see that energy in the buildings, this is what we signed up to do many, many years ago when I got in this profession. So the, the positives that we're seeing, I think, by far outweigh just in that human condition of the optimism that we're seeing, and kids are just doing amazing things. So um, just to, kudos to what Dr. Vitale said, but again, we're seeing it, and it's a good feeling, and I think it hopefully will continue moving us in this direction.
And I would just echo also what both said, and just thanks to our staff. Uh, many months of, of strenuous planning. And I think everybody was ready to get things underway, and it's just, it's just good to see the kids back and the teachers teaching again. So thanks to, to all of our staff.
Excellent. Thanks to the three of you. Uh, Mr. Peterson, do you have a comment to add?
Just a quick question for Dr. Vitale, or perhaps Ms. Berner. Um, planning, preparation, resource acquisition, mitigation activities. Lot of off-budget purchases have occurred, and when I put that together with the two hundred thousand plus meals. Can you give the board some assurances that our financial ship is not about to sail off the edge of the earth?
Yes, um, that's an interesting presentation of that, but obviously, with all the work that has been done of, you know, starting in the spring and, and through the summer. We have had to procure um, significant amounts of unexpected product that we would not be um, buying in a normal year. Whether those are items that go towards the safety of our students and our staff. Or whether it's technology and outdoor learning spaces to go to the learning experience of our students. Um, those are not small amounts. But we have been fortunate that, you know, we, we planned for some as best we could for it. But we have been fortunate that we have received or we have been allocated grant money from several streams um, of COVID-specific grant funding that has come from the federal government and the state government. And we've also been on the receiving end of generosity of our foundation. So at this point in time. Will we have spent more than at this point we've been notified we will get? Absolutely. Uh, but it, it, we're not going off the cliff. Um, as far as meals go. The waiver that we received to feed all children for free was tremendously helpful, but again, that is um, contingent upon funds being available. But that has been very, very helpful to our um, food service program. And we're very pleased that that came to fruition.
Thank you, Ms. Berner. I'll rest assured tonight.
Okay, um, Mr. Jacob, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Very quickly, um. I, I, I couldn't say any of that any better than Dr. Vitale, Dr. McCarty, Dr. McKinley. I just wanted to, to express my gratitude as a parent to everybody on this call and all the staff. I think honestly, I never paid enough attention before. And what I'm most struck by this week, and Dr. Vitale, you referenced it, is how much everybody rolls up their sleeves. Support staff, teachers, administrators, to go so far out of their job description to walk people to cars, to set up tents in the morning and in the afternoon. I was absolutely blown away by how many people that are supporting these children did things that are outside their job description and, and just very appreciative of it. And I think that comes from this team on down. So from a parent, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. I appreciate the, the perspective. Okay, folks, uh, well, it's been a good meeting. Uh, we are now at uh, the point of a motion to adjourn. The only uh, comment I'll add, if not really, um, is just in terms of communication, I'd, I'd say the same thing that Dr. Vitale did. Uh, and when folks reach out to me, I usually start out with, have you spoken to the teacher? Have you spoken to the building principal? Um, because that's, that's the way to walk through this, and it's not per se because it's protocol, I don't think that's the right word here, it's just, it's what's going to get you through a process efficiently, but to Dr. Vitale's point, uh, I know she speaks to many, 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 many parents. Um, and for those of you that are looking for a dialogue, you certainly have your board representation, uh, to the extent you're looking on the website for the district. Uh, you'll now see my, my cell number because I finally cut the cord and got rid of my landline, but to the extent that anyone wants to speak to me, uh, I am all ears. I'm happy to have a conversation with anyone and anyone, everyone on any topic. So with that, then, I'll look for a motion to adjourn our meeting. Mr. DiTullio, our second, I will give that to Ms. Will. Call in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Then folks, we are adjourned. Uh, thank you for being here this evening. Take care.
Bye.
Good night, guys.